September 6th, regular meeting of the zoning commission to order. First order of business is appointment of alternates and we could have one alternate, but we have no alternates, so we are five tonight at this point. Next order of business is the approval of minutes of July 17th. And it was many pages.
It was.
And I have a couple. On page-
Just hang on one second, we pulled it up.
Page two, forty, line forty-seven and forty-eight. It said the planning commission is going to send us something to assist in the prioritization of items in late August via mail, I guess. And did anybody get that? I didn't-
We have not sent it, has not been sent.
Okay, so they didn't tell the truth.
They were planning on it.
It was true at the time, that's right.
There's some rethinking on that, whether to do that or not with the change in the zoning commission coming and the change in board of selectmen. Not sure we wanted to do a prioritization process amidst the changeover.
Okay. Line seventy-four, there's ampersand AMP which I think probably means, I don't know what it means.
It should be dropped.
Should be dropped. Looks like it's just a typo.
The AMP should be dropped.
Flap just dropped in there. There's, on two thirty-eight, which is, I don't know what, it happened twice in here. It says the commission pointed out that while some towns are banning drive-throughs because of concerns with carbon emissions, traffic issues, pedestrian conflicts, this location is already a major traffic, major road with traffic flow, does not have pedestrian conflicts. Who's the commission? We did not vote on that statement, and I don't know-
Say that one more time? Tell me where you are.
Two thirty-eight, and there's another place where it says the commission determined there wasn't an ethics thing and Anne didn't have to leave the meeting.
Oh, I see, I do, I see the more broadly-
There's something-
Maybe it means like discussion-
I think it's kind of a discussion ensued generality, but if that makes you uncomfortable about it, it's kind of-
Somebody mentioned that, I don't think we all discussed it much. Anyway, I don't think the commission made that determination as a body, and nor did we make, or should we make, a commission make a judgment on the ethics of a recusal, which is what Anne, we decided she-
I could vote.
You could vote, but it isn't, you know, that's the ethics commission and the individual's choice.
Would you direct us to reword that?
Please.
We'll do that. We'll talk to the commission clerk and have that reworded.
That was on three eighty-four, was where the Anne's thing was mentioned. Other than that, she has about seven pages of perfect typing and-
I did have a couple of comments there.
Yep.
On line seventy-one, I believe there's a typo, it says plant, I think that should be planned. Line eighty-nine, Dagny Griswold, her first name is spelled with a Y, not an E. And also here's a, representing the board of directors, not just as a member, so if you'd add board member.
Where are you now?
I'm sorry, line eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, okay.
Yeah, eighty-nine.
Oh, right, should be, what is it?
It should be D-A-G-N-Y.
Oh, N-Y, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
She's a member, she'd say, and board member.
Okay.
Yep.
One second, and another one. Also on line two fifty-eight, also appears to be a typo, plant instead of planned. And line two eighty-eight, it says, Angelica, our store manager of Tractor Supply, was concerned about a commissioned member that approached and yelled at customers. Concerned that, I don't think the testimony that it, I mean, the way I read this, it sounds like a zoning commissioner did this, and I don't think that was the testimony.
I think she was referring to a staff member.
Yeah, yeah, so if you could clarify that, let me say, a staff member from the planning and zoning, so it doesn't reflect that any zoning commissioners going around yelling at people.
I think she said that, but that's not what she meant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think one of you, somebody clarified that.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Let me see if there's anything else. That's all I had.
Cool.
Bruce?
I just have one I want to add that I think is important. My document, I printed it off the town website and-
You got the numbers.
The numbers aren't there. But it's in, near the beginning of the section where we get into application twenty-three eighteen Dorsey Crossing, it's near the beginning of that. There's an area where the record says the commission discussed whether there's an opportunity to qualify for eight dash thirty G. I'm down two lines from there.
Yeah, I see it.
And then it goes on to say to assist with the town's goal to achieve thirty percent affordable housing. On the one hand, that's not what was said, it refers to a time when Melissa was speaking, I believe, but she didn't say the town's goal was thirty percent achievable housing. She asked Tony Giorgio about getting to thirty percent with all the new government money that's coming into affordable housing with the seventy-two units, is it a possibility? And his response was essentially, no, that's not viable, there's no way to get to thirty percent on a small size project like that. And I don't know how that got translated to thirty percent, but she was asking if he could get to thirty percent with seventy-two units, and he said, no. Maybe if it was a hundred and twenty-five units, you could get there, but no way with what he's dealing with. So, nobody mentioned the goal of the town, and so I don't know what to say about that line, maybe just take it out. I, I mean, I'm not aware that the town has a goal of thirty percent.
I don't think that was understood.
There is a-
You know, ten percent is kind of statewide goal.
That's the law, but that isn't the town goal.
I'm happy to actually listen to it and reword it with your approval. That would be the easiest thing to do.
I wouldn't want to misinform readers in the future with unrealistic goals for ourselves.
Okay, so you will come back to us next time with revised, revised. Please.
Okay.
On the eighteenth? Yeah, okay. That'll get you, so you can fix those sections at your leisure. Okay, the next thing is the new business, we have a site plan application for an ADU, it's application ZC twenty-three dash thirty-one of John and Kristen Carew, owner, Pennwood Builder applicant, for a site plan amendment to permit a six-hundred square foot attached dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit at eight Ann Mar Lane, assessors map D-oh-four, block two-oh-eight, lot oh-twenty-four, zone R-forty. Is there an applicant here?
Is the applicant here in the audience?
No.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, so it's a, it's a site plan approval, you know, we have the difference between attached units, we approve by site plan, and detached units by public hearing and special exception. So, this is an application of six-hundred square foot attached accessory dwelling, and the pictures are in the staff report, but I did list them for you here. So that, the extension or the addition would be to the rear of the property or of the structure from the frontage on Ann Mar, and the applicant did submit.
Did they submit a site plan?
Yeah, I'm about to bring that to you. I mean, it's just a, you know, a plot plan box, and I'm struggling here with my system here, so.
I looked at that on-
So here's the-
... and there's a big, big lot in the back, a big extension of property in the back.
Did we hear anything from any of the neighbors?
Well, there's no, there's no, there's no notice on the site plan.
Okay, I wasn't sure, sometimes neighbors have a few meetings.
And no was the answer.
Okay.
And one of the requirements, I should mention, of a site plan for an ADU is to ensure that the property owner lives in either the ADU or the main dwelling unit, and they submitted that this is for a family member and they will be occupying the primary dwelling unit while the family member will be at the ADU.
So there's the view from the street, and then the applicant submission. And there is, there is one additional parking space, as you can see here from the site plan, that's required.
Okay. Commission members?
Accepting that drawing as essentially the site plan.
Yeah, we are.
I did, I thought everybody else was.
Anne?
Oh, seems pretty simple.
Tony?
Nothing for me.
Anne? Okay, so we want to make a motion? I think we're all in favor of this, aren't we?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
All right. I move that the zoning commission approves application ZC number twenty-three dash thirty-one of John and Kirsten Carew, owner, Pennwood Builders, applicant for zoning commission site plan approval, to permit a six-hundred square foot attached accessory dwelling unit at eight Ann Mar, assessors map D-oh-four, block two-oh-eight, lot zero-two-four, zone R-forty. Commission finds that the application for a site plan has met the standards set in section three point five and the site plan criteria in section eleven and is subject to the following conditions: An administrative zoning permit is required for construction.
Give him a second.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Carrie's five, nothing. Thank you very much. Okay, next order of business is the continuation of the public hearing on application ZC twenty-three twenty-four of Prospect Enterprises. This has been continued from six twenty-one and seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, let me just make one comment. Yes, this is a continuation of your public hearing. The applicant did provide a resubmitted site plan, response to all of the additional kind of engineering comments that we had been dealing with. All of those issues have been satisfied or resolved, except for the issue of the access from Hot Meadow Street. The town staff, including the town engineer and the police chief, continue to recommend, and we have a condition of approval drafted in your draft, a write-in, write-out condition only from Hot Meadow Street. The applicant, we have not, we do not have consensus with the applicant, and I think the applicant will speak to that issue, but we are recommending a condition that would limit access to write-in, write-out from Hot Meadow Street.
Okay. Commission members have comments or questions?
And of course, the applicant is here.
Yeah. Try, try that again on me, write-in, write-out. What does that mean?
All right, so what that means is the applicant is proposing a full access, actually, Bruce, Mr. Elliott, this will be helpful. No, let me, let me do my best here. So, this access point from Hot Meadow Street at the front of the site, staff is recommending only a write-in, write-out condition. The applicant is proposing a full condition, which would allow a left turn in to the site. So we are, we recommend limiting that.
How about out of the site?
For, write-out only. The applicant is proposing write-out only as well.
Oh, okay, all right, that's fine.
Yes, just that left turn movement-
Left in only, that's the issue.
-that we think is a conflict with the queue. And I'll let Paul kind of talk to that more.
Anne?
I just had one other thing. I was expecting some further comment, I can't remember the detail of it, I should have watched it over again, but there was comment about the property, the site having some, some ongoing thing with DEEP over some sort of problem when it was a gas station garage business for fifty years or however long it was. How is that resolved? Is that in these documents somewhere?
Is there a microphone I want to get out of? Yeah, okay. To the record, Greg Manning, general manager of Prospect Enterprises, and commission, you asked me last time you were here what the environmental condition of it was, and I really wasn't properly prepared to address it at that time, but in the meantime-
In the meantime, I looked into our file a little deeper and I have some comments that I've, have available for the commission now. And the question had been asked at the time, how many, how many groundwater monitoring wells are on the site? And the answer to that is that there are thirteen of them. And I can tell you that all but one of those thirteen groundwater monitoring wells is beneath the standards for remediation as promulgated by the DEEP. So only one of them, and it is the one that is closest to Hot Meadow Street, still has detectable levels that are in excess of what is required under the DEEP. Our consultants have been working with DEEP and under an agreement whereby they are continuing to monitor the groundwater quality and the levels in those wells. And as they monitor them, they're allowing nature just to take its course, and it has made significant improvements since the time they first began monitoring and treating the groundwater. And so now they're using natural attenuation over time to see what happens to that one remaining groundwater monitoring well that still has an exceedance of the standards for remediation under DEEP. It should also be noted that there is potentially a continued point source of contamination on the site. And this contamination I should put out is, I should, I should point out, is specifically a result of a gasoline tank that was on-site that has since been removed. So that tank is gone, but there is still potentially some contamination left in the soil, but it's only the soil that is underneath the existing dealership building right now. So, under the proposal that we have before you tonight, we would have the opportunity, of course, to tear that building down, which we will, in order to make way for the two drive-through restaurants. And when that building is demolished, it creates then the opportunity for us to remove those soils and the potential of any continued point source contamination.
And the other twelve, are they going to be somehow marked for the future to know where they are?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
And, I don't want to belabor this, but somebody filing reports with DEEP regularly?
Yes, yeah.
And with the town?
No, not with the town, there's no requirement to do that, and I'm not even sure that there's a mechanism to do that. But, but yes, DEEP is well aware of the plan and they've been following it all along. The LEP, the Licensed Environmental Practitioner, is really technically an agent for the department.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anne, Tony, comments, questions? Anne, does anyone in the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we did have a presentation.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So once again, for the record, my name is Paul Vitaleano, I'm civil engineer with VHB. The site civil engineer, with me today is Charlie Baker, who's our traffic engineer at VHB, and also Doug Gruner, who's the architect from BKA, because as you noted, the public hearing is still open, so we want to have our entire team here, even though we do feel we're here for really, really hopefully one or two specific items. And you've obviously just met Greg, who represents the owner. So, as was mentioned by, by staff, you know, we met here June twenty-first, if you could believe it, almost three months ago, but, you know, we gave a thorough presentation at that time, and when we left here, the reason that the meeting was continued was specifically for that, that entrance condition that, that staff just mentioned. So, as was mentioned, I'll just recap, that curb cut is, as currently shown, and what we're currently proposing and hoping that you will agree with us after our presentation tonight, is to allow full in, meaning that you could take a write-in and you could also take a left-in, and that the out is a write-out only. What staff recommended is that it be a write-in, write-out, so basically eliminating our left-in movement. So, after this, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Do you need me to point that out? Anyone want, want to see that closer?
Yeah.
So, this is our entrance in. So we are saying that our vehicles should stack in the existing left-turn lane and take a left into the site, and also if you're coming this way, take a right into the site. And the exit is only a right-only. So staff agrees with us on the right-only exit, but what they want, what they would like to do is only have a write-in to the site. So basically, they do not want to allow this left-in movement. So, we're going to get into that in a little more detail, but just to say that that, those were the two basically positions, and we left this meeting in June saying that we would meet with staff to discuss that. So what we did, we met within maybe like a week of this meeting, so we did take the opportunity to go back to the site a couple times. So we've done that a few times throughout this process, and every observation that we've had is basically supporting what our data has been, and I'll let Mr. Baker speak to that again and explain, explain that in detail. But when we did meet with staff, including fire, engineering, fire, and police, they did not change their opinion, that that was their recommendation. So that's why we're here tonight, we would like the commission to consider our analysis, our scientific study of the site, and hopefully side with us on, on our, our opinion. So, even though the site is under DOT jurisdiction, we would like a consensus from, from the town, I feel that goes a long way, and also just having that consensus is just, is just good for our tenants and ourselves. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, we are prepared to discuss that with our traffic engineer. If there's, I'd leave it at your discretion, if there's anything else you'd like to discuss on the site, whether you want to wait until after that, our traffic discussion, or address that now, I'll be happy to do it however you would like to.
I think we're ready for your traffic.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Charlie Baker, I'm a senior traffic engineer with VHB. To start out, I think just to refresh everyone's memory, since it has been a while, I'd just like to start out by reading the staff comment regarding the driveway, just so everyone has a clear understanding of what the staff's comment was. So I quote, "Vehicles traveling north on Hot Meadow Street and turning left into the proposed driveway will queue in the existing left-turn lane for the existing signal at Big Y. A queued vehicle for the proposed development effectively reduces the left-turn lane for the signal from two-hundred-and-thirty feet to one-hundred-and-twenty feet and increases the potential for conflicts." So essentially what staff is saying is that this left-turn lane for the Big Y is currently about two-hundred-and-thirty feet long, whereas if we put our driveway here and we allow left-turn lanes into our driveway, then it'll be reduced to one-hundred-and-twenty feet here that is solely for the Big Y. So they were concerned about reducing that storage length that's available for the Big Y. Based on our traffic analysis, vehicle queues for the left turns into the Big Y are typically only one vehicle long. That's based on our analysis of traffic counts conducted there, and we've also been out there to observe traffic during the afternoon peak on three separate occasions, and our observations support the analysis we did. When we've been out there, we've only seen one or two cars queued in that left-turn lane. Typically, there's no queues. Paul was out there today before the meeting and generally just sees that there are no queues there, that it's just a free flow. Generally, vehicles are going to arrive on green and turn left into the Big Y. So, based on our analysis and our observations, that queue storage length is really not an issue. We think that the left-turn lane was significantly overdesigned when the Big Y was put in, and we did review the traffic report from the original Big Y to figure out why that may have been. And the traffic projections for the Big Y showing the left-turn lane, left turns into that driveway were very conservative, they were significantly higher than what the actual traffic volumes turning left into the Big Y there is. So that's the reason the, the left-turn lane was significantly overdesigned to begin with, and based on our analysis and observations, we're fairly confident that the queues are, it's, it would be a very rare occurrence for these queues to ever reach our site driveway. So we don't, we don't have any concerns associated with our driveway sharing that left-turn lane with the Big Y. And I'd also like to point out that although our analysis shows that that Big Y driveway is not very congested, it's worth noting that restricting left-turn lanes at our driveway would increase congestion somewhat at this signal. With our current proposal where we're allowing those left-turn lanes into our driveway, vehicles are allowed to turn left into our site before they even reach the signal. So if we were to restrict left-turn lanes into our driveway, then they'd be forced to continue up to the signal and wait at the signal, and that would increase delays at the signal somewhat. So, I think the, in terms of congestion at the signal, it's, it's very clear that it is better to allow left-turn lanes at our driveway, because that will reduce congestion at the signal by allowing our traffic to, to turn left into the site before reaching the signal. But I understand the comments from the town staff requesting that driveway configuration change, it was also based on safety concerns. However, in our professional opinion, that left-turn restriction isn't warranted for this driveway. In making that assessment, we reviewed crash records using the Yukon Crash Database for the entire segment on Hot Meadow Street from the Big Y driveway down to Eli Lane, and we found that there were only six reported crashes in the past three years on that segment. And right now, there are twelve full-access curb cuts along that segment. So only six crashes in three years with twelve driveways in that area is a fairly low crash rate, and that doesn't indicate any elevated safety concerns associated with allowing a full-access driveway along this area. So, we are actually proposing to consolidate three of those existing full-access curb cuts that are along our site frontage into the one driveway, and then we're also proposing to restrict left turns out of the driveway. So with our current plan, we're already recommending, proposing to significantly reduce the conflict points along this segment. I understand that the, the staff would like to further reduce those conflicts by prohibiting the left-turn lanes into our site, but the prospective tenants are concerned that this would put, put their businesses at a significant competitive disadvantage relative to other driveways along this area. I think in particular, Starbucks not allowing left-turn lane into their site when they're right next to a Dunkin' Donuts that does have a full-access driveway in this location, I can understand their concern about that, that that might put them at a disadvantage. And again, based on our review of the crash records and traffic conditions in the surrounding area, our professional opinion is that that left-turn lane restriction isn't warranted. Another downside to restricting the left turns into our driveway at this location is that it creates incentive for people to make illegal left-turn lanes, illegal left turns into the site. So, we could design this if it was to be write-in, write-out. The typical way to do that would be to create a channelized condition here where you redesign this island to kind of divert traffic, to try to make it harder for people to turn left into the site. But we have to design this driveway to allow, to be wide enough to allow fire trucks to turn right into the driveway at that location. So when, when you're designing it to be wide enough for fire trucks, it's really not possible to design it to be channelized sharp enough that a passenger vehicle wouldn't be able to turn left into the driveway. I've worked with DOT on projects in the past where they've not favored a left-turn restriction in that type of situation, because they don't want to create a situation where you're incentivizing people to break the law, because it just, it creates disrespect for traffic control devices. So, DOT's general policy is to allow left turns unless there's a significant and unique safety concern with allowing them, which, again, in our opinion, that isn't the case here. So finally, just like to point out that Hot Meadow Street is a state-owned roadway, and we have submitted this site plan to the DOT as part of the encroachment permit process, and we haven't completed that process, because they, they generally don't approve any drawings until after local approval is finalized. But they did review the site plan that we submitted to them with this driveway configuration, and they had no objections to this driveway configuration. So, I think-
Okay. Thank you.
I ask one question.
Can I ask one question? For Mr. Baker?
Sure.
You said that, um, if you're not, if you're not allowed to make left turns into the new site and you have to go to the Big Y to make a left turn, that there's gonna be an increase in volume at the Big Y. Do you have any analysis as to what percentage that increase will be?
Sure, I could, I could look that up. So, we are projecting, um, the highest volume would be 72 left turns per hour during the morning peak that would be turning left into our site driveway. So, if, if we restricted those left turns, then that would be 72 vehicles turning left at the Big Y signal.
And what's the ground, what's the normal existing traffic at, at this point? Before you do this.
The, currently, I will... So, currently, the Big Y signal has very low left turns there. It was only 15 vehicles per hour turning left into the Big Y. Um, based on our traffic counts, the majority of traffic entering and exiting the Big Y comes from the north. Um, so I think, I think that's a, the main reason that left-turn lane was, um, overdesigned is that the initial traffic report was assuming that most of the traffic would come from the south. Um, but in actuality, it's, it's mostly coming from the north. Um, and, and that's common, they, you know, they couldn't predict the future, but...
Anybody have any other questions?
I guess, I guess, oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, the only que- the real question I have is, why is it so important to have that driveway access? It doesn't seem to me that it should be any problem for anybody wanting to access any of those businesses to turn in at the Y and just come around.
It, it's really...
Turn anybody off to going to a store to have to turn, go around? I wouldn't think.
It's really, um, you know, it's interesting. Having worked with national tenants for several years, they're, they're very particular about their, their sites and how their access is a key, key part of that. Um, a lot of things to them are down to the second. They really feel that if they have any disadvantage to someone else, that will detract any customer, that greatly impact their business. I've worked with these types of retailers for my entire career. And it come, it comes down to something that's small is, is enough to really compromise their, their desire to, to be in a location. Um, like Charlie was saying before, if you're seeing the Dunkin' Donuts and you're like, you know, I could take a left in here or I have to go all the way around, and I'm rushing, I agree with you. But that, that is, that is their feeling. And it's also a lot of people's feeling too, they will take the easy way out. And to Charlie's point, they will also maybe make an illegal left or, or do whatever it takes to just kind of get somewhere sooner. So, that, that's just kind of human nature. But it is how these, these particular tenants do look at this type of competitive atmosphere. That's how they look at it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I, that's like the one thing that I would see somewhat compelling because I would 100% understand what they're saying where they can make a left into Dunkin' and they can't make a left into Starbucks. And I happen to be one of those 15 cars that does come from the south. And Big Y is my grocery store. Um, so, I guess my primary concern is still two things. First of all, so you said you presented your, 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 um, reasonings and your, your thoughts to the police and the fire department, and they still said no. Did they say any specific reason or, you know, because, I mean, that's compelling to me as well, that they both still don't agree that that's a safe solution?
I, I think it was more, um, and with all due respect to your staff, great people and great professionals, but it was really about perception versus numbers. So, we're, we're looking at the data. Um, you know, you said you're one of the cars that travels south there, right? So, it was just some...
I go from the south, I go north.
I mean, someone could just swear up and down that they're the fifth car in line. But sometimes it's just, you know, there wasn't any backup. It was really, it was really their, their experience being here, that was how they presented. And they just said, "We've been here, we live here, this is what we see."
Well, so here's what I'm thinking.
Perhaps I'll respond to that.
Oh, all right, you do that first, then I'll say something else.
Two primary reasons. One, the left turn, Hop Meadows is a busy street. They get complaints about it all the time. Cueing at that other places. Reducing conflict is important to, to, to the town engineer and to the town planner and to, to the police chief. So, reducing that left turn across the lane, we think is a good thing. Then the second thing, um, whi- which should be noted is, is staff also had, maybe it's a perception concern, but our concern was that if you have a car, a vehicle queued to turn left into this, into the, into this development, that there may be folks who want to get to the light, to get in that queue and be prevented from being in that queue and then make a, a motion back on, you know, back into the, into the through lane to get out and around to get to the, to the Big Y, the light at the Big Y. And we thought that reducing those conflicts was a good idea. And we certainly understand national tenants' needs and, and those issues. And, and we thought we were just gonna, we thought weighing that safety factor was important.
Well, yeah, so I'll just say, so my concern, again, is, so me, I'm gonna go to Big Y and, and everybody's, I mean, I, I see the lines at Dunkin' and I know the lines are gonna be there for Starbucks, like, there's no question. So, everybody's lined up to take a left in there. But because the turn lane only starts before there, that means we're all gonna be on Hop Meadow and I can't get to Big Y because I can't get past him because there's not a big enough left-turn lane for that.
So, I'm gonna let Charlie answer that because that's where our, our numbers are saying that you're not gonna have that, that queue. So, I'll let, I'll let you answer that.
Yeah.
As far as the stacking distance.
I, I think that was, um, another, um, point of disagreement between, um, us and staff is that they, I think they were a little skeptical of the analysis we completed at the intersection that they, they seemed to think that, whereas our analysis is showing that there's only a queue of one or two vehicles turning into Big Y, they were concerned that it would be much greater than that. So, we did, we, we tried to investigate that further. We went back out to the site just because, I mean, sometimes the numbers are wrong. It, it's possible that we did our traffic counts on a, a low-volume day or there was some anomaly. So, we wanted to go back out there and just make sure we weren't missing something. Um, so, we did go out there again during the afternoon peak to observe traffic. And, and again, we, we just weren't seeing more than one or two cars queuing at the Big Y.
But I'm not concerned about the people queuing up for Big Y. I'm concerned about all the people queuing up to go to Starbucks who are blocking me from getting to my queue for Big Y.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, so that, that's my concern more because I know this town people love Starbucks.
Okay.
So, there's gonna be cars, yeah.
That, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, our analysis for the, uh, queue turning into the Starbucks or the, this site, um, was also minimal. And the reason for that is our driveway doesn't have a signal. So, it's, it's free flow turning left into our site. The only thing you have to wait for is a gap in traffic coming southbound. And that nearby signal there, um, creates gaps in traffic below it because whenever the light turns, um, turns green, you're gonna be cycling. There's gonna be, uh, our analysis shows that there's plenty of gaps to be able to turn left into there. Um, I think, I, I understand that there's, um, a lot of concern about this area in particular because of the Dunkin' Donuts to the south. And I think one of the things that makes the Dunkin' Donuts, um, a little more problematic than this site is that there's not enough room on-site to, to store their drive-through queues. So, there are situations in the morning at the Dunkin' Donuts where the drive-through queue is gonna back up all the way to Hop Meadow Street. So, then, when that happens and a car wants to turn left in from Hop Meadow Street, he can't do it. So, a lot of what you're seeing is congestion on Hop Meadow Street at the Dunkin' Donuts isn't necessarily because there aren't gaps in traffic on Hop Meadow Street. It's because there's just no place to turn into on the Dunkin' Donuts site. Whereas, our site, the Starbucks, um, entrance is set significantly further back from the road. So, it would take, um...
We're, 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 um, we're 18 cars from here to here. So, I did not look at Dunkin' Donuts that closely. But I, I think that if, I looked at it a little bit today, I think their 18th car puts in the street. Um, so, we're, we're 18 here, which Starbucks is typically like 13 or 14. So, that was very important to us from day one because we knew that. We were, we were told by staff the first day we came in here that, that that was an issue. So, that, that's why we did the drive-through way we did. And that's why we actually have this double lane here. So, we're at 18 cars here. Um, and you have to imagine that even if we came down to here, I looked at it and we would hope this never happens, even if it's free coffee. This is car number 25 down here. At, at this spot, not even blocking the Chipotle entrance. So, car 25 would be down there.
So, how much longer is your queue line than the Dunkin's queue line?
I, go ahead.
We, we don't have good data on that. Um, Connecticut DOT has done extensive, uh, data collection at, at coffee shops throughout the state because there, I think in the eighties and nineties, there were a lot of Dunkin' Donuts built all over the state that had inadequate drive-through storage length. Um, but I think most of their data was based on Dunkin' Donuts. Um, but the, the result of their study was that they recommend a minimum 14-car queue for any coffee shop drive-through. And on some of our projects, I don't think we had one projection here, but sometimes Starbucks has their own internal projections and for what, what they think they need for a drive-through queue. And it's usually very much in line with that, either 13 or 14 cars. So...
This is, this queue is longer than the Dunkin' queue as shown on the site plan.
Yes.
Not, not, not including, you know, spill...
10% longer or 20% longer?
Well, here, to put it in perspective, if you see like the buildings kind of line up, right? So, here's their window, there's actually a car in there. So, I counted before I came here, this is a car at the order window, that's around car four, okay? So, just, you could do your own, yeah, so if you look at this guy to this guy's four, right? By the time you get to eight or seven, you're already starting to block your own parking. So, then by the time you get to like 12 or 13, you're already blocking your entrance. So, let's, let's say this is 12 or 13. Like I said, here, we're at 18.
Okay. About a third long.
Well, the third longer and we're nowhere near the street.
Yeah.
Is there any data on the situation at Dunkin' today at 7:30 in the morning or 8 o'clock? Do they spill out into the street often?
I mean, just, we just have anecdotal, I mean, I...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes it does.
I drive by there just about every day and they do spill out frequently.
Especially, and it's perception is...
Early in the morning, uh, between 7:30 and 9:00.
I mean, and we're only talking about Starbucks, but I mean, they do have Chipotle too, like, you know? That, that's got a drive-through, that's gonna be popular too.
Chipotle, just to reiterate something...
Oh, that's right, they're just the pickup.
Yeah, do you mind if I just restate that?
Sure.
Just quickly, just in case for the public too. Really, we probably shouldn't even show these cars in here. Um, so, we're showing cars in the drive-through lane here. But this Chipotle, while, while it is a full-service eat-in restaurant, um, their drive-through is not a typical traditional order-window type drive-through. This is an app pickup only. So, you have to order on the app, you're told when your order's ready, and that's when you, you go get it. Um, so, this isn't, the, the traditional drive-through would have queues much longer. On, on these app pickups, it's found to be just, this is fairly new for the area. Um, so, less data, but we're told it's, it's a lot less, three or four cars.
Any other comments, questions?
Uh, maybe it's just an obvious one, but in terms of creating that separation for safety's sake, what about some sort of a barrier between the north and southbound traffic? I mean, so that you can't, um, yeah, the southbound and the northbound, uh, so that you can't make that illegal left turn across?
That... We had that conversation when we were, when, when, when we were meeting, when we raised that issue, would DOT be accommodating to that? And I think the answer was not typically.
Yeah, I, I haven't approached that issue with DOT, so I can't definitively say no. But I think it, based on previous experience, I think very unlikely that they would allow that. They'd have, uh, maintenance concerns with their plows. Um, I think they, they would only, um, want a median in that type of situation for extraordinary circumstances if you had very high-speed, high-volume roadways. Um, and the median would probably stretch for a lot longer distance. Um, so, I, I, I don't think that's something they would consider for this site.
But you're not aware that it's been rejected?
No, we, we haven't, we haven't proposed that, so it has not been rejected.
Well, we haven't proposed it because we don't want to restrict our left in anyway, so we want to propose it.
There's that too.
What's the, uh, what's the long-term traffic projection for Hop Meadow Street?
We, um...
I mean, years ago, you used to be able to get out of the parking lot and drive anywhere you want to go. Recently, it's not so easy to get out of a parking lot.
Yeah.
You also have all the new apartments, do we go in?
No, just...
Dorset Creek.
And Hammond.
So, we do, we do consider future growth in our analysis and that's what Charlie's looking at.
We, we had assumed a 1% annual growth rate on Hop Meadow Street, and that was based on a recommendation of DOT, from DOT's Policy and Planning Unit. And I believe we also accounted for, um, some other background developments that have been approved recently. I'm just trying to verify that. Uh, correction, it was a, a 0.6% annual growth rate.
You see, you've got Hop Meadow being filled with apartments through Granby. Uh, up by, up by the YMCA, there's a big new complex. We've got some in both up and down. So, I think the growth of the traffic on Hop Meadow Street is, is being underestimated maybe. What would that do over 10 years or 15 years?
I, um, well, I will say that, um, we, we got that growth rate from DOT's Policy and Planning Unit. So, I, I don't know, um, what black box they use to, to develop that projection. Um, but they do, um, they're frequently reviewing, uh, trends in historical growth. Um, and they're generally a little more conserv- they try to be more conservative than what the actual growth rate is. Um, also, our, our analysis found that that Big Y signal is currently operating at a level of Service B. Um, so, there is significant capacity there for future growth, um, if it does occur.
Is there a concern that, um, Starbucks would pull out of the development if they didn't get a left-hand turn?
I, I think that's, that's very big possibility, which is why we're here. So, we are looking for a decision from this commission tonight, hopefully, um, so that we can take it back to our tenants and basically continue, basically have them make a decision.
I think Diane has a good, made a good point earlier in terms of going from south to north of people... Because that's a, if you've got traffic coming down from Granby, from north to south, that can be, even though there's lights, it's still a long line of cars you're waiting to turn in. So, I can see if one person with a blinker is trying to make a left-hand turn, people who want to go to Big Y are just gonna pull out and go around them. They shouldn't, but they're gonna do that too.
Well, that, that's where our analysis is showing, like Charlie said, the gaps in the signal, that they're not waiting long to take that left into the site and it, it only be one car.
I, I tried to make the left, I was on the right side yesterday trying to come over to go back down south. And I must've sat there a good five or 10 minutes as the cars kept tri- well, maybe, it felt that long, maybe it wasn't that long. It was a very long time because I, I couldn't, at the minute, I got this break from Granby, cars from Simsbury were coming. So, you couldn't, you couldn't get through. And that was yesterday about 2:30?
You guys are really good, you know, this is the most fun we've had in a while.
Mr. Chairman, I would just remind you, um, the public's hearing is still open, so you certainly could hear from others.
Sure.
So, if we're finished, I'll ask if anybody...
I just have one more question. I, I just want to be clear about this, that you're looking at the past for Big Y. Does Big Y feel like their utilization should be the basis for considering? Maybe they, I don't know if they're in, involved in these conversations, but, um, I don't, I don't know if there's store, which doesn't seem all that busy when I'm in there, which is infrequently. Are they at somewhere around where they want to be in terms of the volume in that store? And, and just, my point isn't to get at the company's secrets, but don't use projections in there based on the past when we, you know, expect that there'll be significant change down there. I mean, well, it's a nice store and the building in Granby, they're going berserk with apartments up there. Well, that's...
I don't think what we expect, we know.
We know they are. And so, there's gonna be a lot more people, um, before, too long. Before those buildings get built, there's gonna be more traffic, I think.
I'm, I'm not aware of any, um, expected growth at the Big Y. Um, our study was based on, uh, traffic counts collected at that driveway, so that's just...
It's more or less current information that you're using. And doesn't...
And I think we're all thinking in terms of all the apartments that are going up.
Oh, yeah.
Particularly north, even just Dorset Crossing or the ones in Granby, they're all gonna be coming down. I mean, I think the projections for traffic may be current, but I think you need to look at what the future's gonna be.
And we, we did, um, reach out to DOT for that purpose. Um, DOT's Policy and Planning Unit is, is aware. Any, any proposed development, um, does go through their office, so they're aware of it. They see the traffic studies. Um, and that's part of what informs their decision about recommending a, a growth rate. Um, and if there are any pending, um, applications, um, that have been approved... Um, and if there are any pending, um, applications, um, that have been approved, then they, we would also, um, include those in our future projections. But that, that point-six percent annual growth rate suggested by DOT was, um, just intended to account for, um, unknowns and potential future sources of traffic growth.
Okay, as a traffic engineer, if the traffic were thirty percent more than you projected, or forty percent more than you projected, which is the better choice?
That, that's a, that's a difficult question. Um, I'd have to run the numbers to, to see what would happen. Um, I, I see what you're getting at, though, there is a threshold where, um, traffic could grow to such the point that it would be very difficult to turn left in there, and at that point, then I would start considering, uh, recommending a left-turn restriction. Um, but based on the data we have, it's, it's nowhere near that point.
Okay. Everybody satisfied here?
Uh, yeah, I just want to be sure I'm, I'm understanding this, though. You're at loggerheads with the staff, that includes our police chief, our fire chief, and our planning director, who have a different opinion about the solution here than you, you fellows do. Is that right? Okay. And tonight you want us to take one or the other?
That's correct.
Okay. Got it.
And, and I would also just like to say in response to Commissioner Madigan's question about, excuse me.
Oh, no, you got me.
Oh, okay, all right.
There have been, everybody's ever called me that. Yeah. Everybody's ever dressed me correctly.
Thought I made a fatal error there.
Oh, go on, sorry.
Uh, with respect to, uh, you know, how the tenants feel about this, uh, the way this works is, once we get an approval, we go to them, and then they have the discretion to determine whether or not the approval that we've gotten on their behalf is acceptable to them. So I can't say one way or the other if this is a deal-breaker for them, or even for Chipotle. You know, what I can say, that my experience as a real estate developer and, you know, owning properties, or manage, I should say managing properties throughout the greater Hartford area, uh, for my entire career, um, is that the, the speculative space that we have in back of Starbucks and, and Chipotle is not spoken for yet. And, um, you know, that's a big consideration, that's thirteen thousand square feet out of a, you know, out of a total of, say, seventeen thousand square feet. And so, again, part of our concern is that we don't want to make it any more difficult for those prospective tenants than necessary, uh, to be able to get access to those spaces. I mean, it's small decisions like this that affect the decision-making of, uh, of prospective tenants. And, um, you know, that's a very important consideration as to the overall economics of this project.
George, can you answer a question? In the event that we voted with the applicant, and in five years, the experience has been that that was a bad choice, whose responsibility is it to make that call and to perhaps reconstruct the, that set of driveways?
So I, I would suspect that, that, that once they leave this, this venue, and, um, in several years, it would be a, a, a plead and a, and a complaint, or a concern and question of DOT to whether they would consider limiting that out, access in the future. I don't see how it comes back to this body necessarily, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I mean, not that it's come back to us, but, uh, DOT could come back.
We would have to ask DOT to, to, to consider and, and look at the.
But the town could go to DOT and say.
We could.
You know, this is the experience, we'd like you to consider something different, probably go to the applicant and say the same thing. But anyway, that's just a question of how things would flow. Has everybody got their questions answered here?
If I, if I may, with respect to that question, it's not lost on us that this may not be the last time that we come before this commission for this site. Uh, and, and if experience, uh, happens to prove differently than the professional opinions from our engineers, um, you know, I, I think that the commission may have some latitude then with respect to, uh, whether or not future decisions might be forthcoming in our direction.
Okay. All right, now, is there anyone in the public who cares to speak to this application? Two people. Who wants to go first? Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko, fifteen Oakhurst Road. Um, you may be happy or not happy to know that I didn't write a whole speech tonight, so I'm doing this off the cuff. Um, but what's important to me is that this is an application for a special exception. This is not something they're trying to create that's within our zoning regulations as they exist for this site today. They're asking for a special exception of an increase of up to five, of up to fifty percent of the lot coverage. And that's a lot. Um, whatever is approved on this lot is here long-term. Whether Starbucks comes or goes, Chipotle comes or goes, whoever comes in the back or not, we're left with the decisions that are made by this board to make a special exception on this property tonight. So if that ends up being two breakfast places with drive-throughs, and not a dinner one and a breakfast one, if it ends up being a regular drive-through that doesn't have an app that gets people through quicker, we're still left with those decisions that were made about the turns, and in fact, whether to approve the site at all. We've spent the bulk of the evening talking just about the turn. Um, and that is incredibly relevant. There are at least three apartment buildings going up in Granby, or at least being considered. One is two hundred and thirty-five apartments at Station Two Eighty. One is a hundred and thirty units, The Grand at Ridgewood, and Vessels trying to get forty-eight units in there right now. And I'm sure that's not the end of it. My concern is that this is our town, and what we do here stays for a long time. And we've heard from plenty of developers that they're concerned about what you'll say when they come back for another round of something from the zoning commission, but that hasn't made them adhere to the things that you've asked of them in apartment buildings with retail space, or different requirements that the zoning commission has put on them. So, you know, future trust or credibility is not holding a lot of water with me right now. There are three drive-throughs planned in that location, and one of them exists. Whether Dunkin's spilling out onto the street or not, i- is immaterial in terms of the, whether that's gonna have an impact on this, it exists. We can't change that, it's spilling out onto the street, so adding more spillage isn't gonna make it better. Um, I don't know if you all realize, but the back of that lot has a very steep slope to it. Very steep slope up where those trees are behind that building. So that, whatever thirteen thousand square feet building, or whatever it is, is going to sit significantly higher in visual appearance compared to the two buildings in front, and it's gonna be sort of a monstrosity there. On top of it, the Design Review Board heard, um, descriptions of what they call rain gardens to deal with the runoff that that lot coverage is gonna create, not only in the parking lots, but into the street. And rain gardens, if you aren't aware, is the new euphemism for retention ponds, basically, which, uh, is supposed to catch the water. So you're talking about, you know, just retention ponds catching this water. Um, I have questions about the traffic count, was that done in the summer? When there's not a lot of people in town because they're on vacation, or was that done at very busy times of the year? Was it done when there was a soccer tournament going on? Because that materially changes the traffic count in that area. Um, the threat that people might break the law if we design it this way, I don't think should be a reason to say yes. I mean, if you don't design it the way we want, people are gonna break the law, people need to follow the law, it's the law. Um, and lastly, national tenants are really particular about details, but this is our town. It's important to the town of Simsbury and the residents in it that zoning is followed in a particular way. It's important that we retain our architectural design consiste, consistency and the livability of our town. It's important that we adhere to regulations that we've already set for a reason. So in my mind, there needs to be a really good reason to approve an exception, because an exception is ac, exactly what they're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll put this over here so it's not. My name is Sharon Thomas, um, forty-two Bretton Wood Drive, and just a couple of things, um, you know, one is about the growth that is happening in Granby, I live up the north and come down to Big Y. And so what I will say is, there's not a whole lot of traffic coming that way, because a lot of us have learned that we can cut through the skating, that little driveway. So we can cut through and come in the back way into Big Y. My concern is more with regard to what's gonna happen with the backup into Hot Meadow, really. Because I understand their concern is more with their tenants that are going in, but m- my concern is more around the spillage that happens from Dunkin', which is going to continue, and Starbucks coming there is not gonna stop it. But how are those people, because there's spillage in the street, how are those people going to get to even Starbucks? Because you've got a lot of cars in the street. I'm one of those that goes in, most people in town like drive-throughs, and nobody's inside, okay? But they don't get out their cars. So you're gonna have that spillage, and, and so, and there's no out. So what a lot of us do today is, we park across the street, or we park where Wagner's is, and then we walk. Well, now with you building, we're not gonna be able to do that. So there needs to be, even though it's not your tenant, there needs to be some understanding as to, if I'm a Starbucks person and I'm trying to get to Dunkin', how am I gonna get there when there's all this traffic in the street? Um, and then, lastly, I would say, if I haven't said it already, definitely we need to consider the growth that's happening in town. Granby has not redone their streets, which they're doing right now for no reason. They've got a lot of building that's coming up, and people don't go to Stop &amp; Shop as much anymore, they're going to Big Y. So the traffic is changing. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Susan Van Cleve, Six Mallard Circle. Um, so first of all, I didn't really come prepared to speak that much about traffic. I had a little bit I was gonna say, but after watching the presentation and understanding the issues a little more clearly, I definitely agree with our Fire, Police, and Planning Department. Um, I am not a drive-through person, I resist drive-throughs, I don't go to Starbucks or Dunkin's. Um, so I don't have a lot of experience with them, I do go to that Pride gas station, it's the closest to my house, and I actually avoid rush hour, and it's still hard to pull out and make a left out of the Pride. So doing this, to me, just seems overwhelmingly ridiculous. And I guess, I had a whole other thing I was gonna speak about, I can actually, um, I can, I can explain the comment that Melissa made about Raising Canes, which we're not talking about. To be honest, I don't want to call her up, but we were texting during the meeting, and I was gonna stay, talk about this development, I was gonna mention that drive-throughs have an effect on our environment, and then she mentioned it for Raising Canes, but I'm not gonna talk about Raising Canes tonight. But I think, um, so that was my comment, that even though I knew that's not even part of what you want to hear, we're a town that's trying to move through with sustainability, and we're putting up this piece of property that has a tremendous amount of cover on it. Um, rain gardens are not, um, retention pools, but they do need to be managed and taken care of, are they gonna, is that gonna happen? But also, you're putting in a drive-through, um, Chipotle's might have a little less drive-through, but you have the, the bank also. And those idling cars spew carbon dioxide into our environment, and they're not good for our health. And these might be only a few cars, in terms of all the cars in our town, but we're still moving in the wrong direction. And I just really disagree with putting these in, and with accepting this as all we can get. It doesn't seem to fit in with this location, and I understand Wagner looks ugly, but why do we jump on the first thing? Why are we putting something in that we don't need? We don't need a Starbucks, we don't need a Chipotle's, and we certainly don't need a building that has no tenant. I mean, they tried that up by the Whole Foods, and they're still trying to fill those. So do we really need more retail? So I'm just really confused, and I understand that we pretty much bow down to developers around here, that we're worried about our taxes, but none of this makes sense to me, it just doesn't make sense. And I can't really give you a suggestion about what should go here, Wagner's is ugly? Well, I could, we could make it into a park or put solar panels on it, but it just doesn't seem right for multiple reasons. And if traffic is the, is the one major one, I don't see any reason to approve this at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this application?
I have one comment.
Dave?
David Moore, eighteen Bob White Way. Um, I work down in the southern part of this, of the town, but I do a lot of traveling going up and down Route Ten. Traffic is going to be an issue. Uh, there is no question that with the additional retail, uh, particularly with the drive-throughs, that you're going to have, um, an increase fourfold, is my guess, as to what the volume is going to be. That is one concern. Another concern is, as was noted, uh, by a prior speaker, the elevation of the property is relatively even, but there is a hill behind. And the concern that I have is whether or not the soil is gonna be properly or sufficiently remediated. That was an auto repair place for decades. The amount of petroleum distillates and/or just outright gas and oil in that ground for almost a hundred years is a fairly significant accretion. And if you have runoff coming from the hillside behind, the water is going to be carrying the various particulates through, where? To the Farmington River. That is a concern that has been addressed with the application, I'm just not sure that it is sufficient. Please understand, as the former vice chair of the Economic Development Commission for this town, seeing commercial development is a good thing. It is something that this town needs, but it needs to be done carefully, and it needs to be done with consideration of a number of different issues, particularly relating to the possible pollution underneath. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else care to speak? I think it's getting to be time to close the.
I always remind you to, the applicant should always have the, the last opportunity to rebut any, anything that was raised.
You okay? Okay, can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing, Dave.
Second?
I move second.
I'll second it.
Hi, Tony. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I abstain. Okay, motion to close the public hearing passes five to nothing with no abstentions. Okay. Now we can discuss taking action on this application.
You're packing a nice screen, and in the staff report, you have draft motions. I would recommend that you.
I recommend that you separate special exception approvals that have made it to fine from, from the site plan.
Right.
And remember how this both the special exception and the site plan have been drafted with, with the recommendation on the right in, right out. It's a, it's a certainly a, they're long motions and so reference them because they're part of the public record or you can read them all.
The special exception is for an increased, increase in the coverage.
There's two, so it's really, it's really a two-part special exception.
Okay.
One is to allow an increase of, in coverage, essentially from 40% to 60%, or 40% to 59%. As well as restaurants are special exceptions in, in that the district as well, so.
Okay. So that, the special exception consideration is to permit a restaurant, restaurant use on the property as well as the land coverage issue. And I think we all recognize that it's actually probably being decreased from what the actual situation was with Wagner Ford having most of it covered with asphalt, although lately it's all cracked up, so. Anyway, any, anybody care to make a motion on the special exception? Go ahead.
I make the following motion. Zoning commission approves, excuse me, application ZC number 23-24, Prospect Enterprises LLC. Owner Paul Vitialano of VHB. Applicant for a special exception pursuant to section 4.4 to allow up to a 50% increase to the maximum coverage allowed in the B2 zone and special exceptions pursuant section, pursuant to section 4.5 to permit a plus or minus 2,400 square foot restaurant, a plus or minus 2,325 square foot restaurant as part of a site plan along with a plus or minus 11,600 square foot retail building and a drive-up ATM at 1263 Hop Meadow Street, formerly Wagner Ford. Assessors map 105 block 403 lot 018, zone B2, based upon the following findings. Now, the specific considerations for special exceptions as found in section 12 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations have been met as conditioned and modified. Those considerations include orderly development, the impact of the redevelopment of the site on the Hop Meadow Carter is a point of discussion, as is the increase of maximum impervious coverage. The applicant's revisions to the stormwater management plans mitigates these concerns. Property values. It is expected that the redevelopment will have a positive impact on area property values. Public safety. The primary safety issue related to access to the site from Hop Meadow Street can be mitigated by a condition of approval limiting access to a right-in, right-out condition only. Traffic considerations. The project as proposed is expected to have a negative impact on traffic in the Hop Meadow Carter adjacent to the site. The applicant's traffic study show a level of service decrease for certain turning movements. A right-in, right-out only condition on Hop Meadow, recommended by the police chief and the town engineer, helps to mitigate traffic and access concerns. Landscaping and buffers. The applicant has provided a robust landscaping plan and subject to the following conditions and modifications to the project. One, the project shall be developed in substantial conformance with the plan set dated May 26, 2023, revised August 23, 2023, prepared by VHB. Two, the project shall be developed in substantial conformance with the architectural set dated June 20, 2023, prepared by BKA Architects. The main site access point at Hop Meadow Street shall be limited to a right-in, right-out condition.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I think the point of question here is the condition three on the right-in, right-out. I think we need to give our opinions on that. Diane, you for that or against it?
I am for maintaining the right-in, right-out condition, simply because while I understand the reasons why you would want it changed, I'm not seeing, knowing what I know of the area, knowing that I know of the development, I just, I don't, I don't see, and frankly, I, I feel bad, but when you reminded me of the building in the back, that just reminded me of the additional traffic that we're going to be getting into that building. And I just, depending on what it is, I just think, I just, I, yeah, I think it is safer to maintain right-in, right-out.
Okay. Tony?
Yeah, I support the recommendation made by staff. I think while I'm in support of developing that area, I think traffic is an ongoing concern and we need to take steps to mitigate that. And I think the right-in, right-out limitation addresses part of that concern.
Bruce?
I guess a further question before I sort of respond, but the, at the last line of that section, it says, "Recommended by the police chief and the town engineer." I thought during discourse earlier in this meeting, I heard it said that the fire marshal was supportive of this scenario and that the town planner was supportive of this scenario. I think that should have been in here, but it doesn't change my opinion. I mean, am I, am I mistaken? Did somebody else hear anything different relative to the planner or the fire marshal? Or maybe nothing? Maybe it was just my imagination.
No, I heard fire marshal as well.
There was something in the package from the fire marshal.
Well, for whatever reason, okay. And then the town planner happens to be with us, but you don't have to speak on this. But I thought you were supportive of this scenario as representative of the staff in your position earlier. Okay. So I'm, I'm supportive of this scenario myself, that we should go with the right-in, right-out.
I'm very much in favor of economic development and I, I hate to put any economic development in jeopardy. On the other hand, I think we have to support the recommendations of our town officials from the town planner to the police chief to the town engineer. So therefore, I would support a right-in, right-out only condition.
It doesn't matter what I think. There's four votes.
Want to go on the record?
No, no. I, I think traffic is an issue. I think traffic's going to be greater than the forecast. Donnie Barney, who was on this board for 25 years, said that he'd observed, he'd sat through 25 years of proposals and not one of them had increased the traffic. But anyway, traffic has increased and I think traffic safety is important. Traffic volumes, I think are going to increase more than we expect. And I think the staff and police chief and town engineer are correct. So we have a motion and a second. Did I get a second?
Excuse me.
Any more discussion?
I just want to, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, I just want to address the conversation about whether we should be doing this sort of development at all, because it was always assumed just that. Certainly, you know, I think we're all happy to see that site developed after all of those years. And I definitely think it's an improvement, you know, it may not be exactly what everybody had in mind, but we have to take what people are willing to do. But I think that compared to what's been there for years, I think it is a vast improvement. So I appreciate that.
I think you agree that, everybody agrees with that.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Okay. The site plan is approved. I'm sorry, special exception is approved, five to nothing, no abstentions. Tony, why don't you do the site plan?
Just to help you out, I would just recommend you kind of short, you can say the zoning commission approved application ZC 23-24, site plan, and then go down to the conditions and modifications. You don't have to reread the ad again, unless you want to.
I went through the tedious one. Go ahead.
The zoning commission approves application ZC number 23-24 and subject to the following conditions and modifications to the project. One, the project shall be developed in substantial conformance with the plan set dated May 26, 2023, revised August 23, 2023, 23, 23, prepared by VHB. Two, the project shall be developed in substantial conformance with the architectural set dated June 20, 2023, prepared by BKA Architects. Three, the main access point at Hop Meadow Street shall be limited to a right-in, right-out condition. No left turns from northbound Hop Meadow Street shall be permitted. Four, prior to the issuance of a building permit for this project, the applicant shall submit to the Town of Simsbury an erosion and sediment control bond in a form acceptable to the town in the amount of $25,000. Five, prior to the issuance of the building permit for this project, the applicant shall submit two sets of milars and one paper set for signature and recordation. Six, prior to the release of any bonds for this project, the applicant shall submit an as-built for the project. Seven, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the plan shall be revised and easement documents submitted to include a public access easement along the Hop Meadow frontage to accommodate the sidewalk in a form acceptable to the town. Eight, prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for the property, the applicant shall, shall replace and/or replace any damaged public sidewalk along the frontage in a manner acceptable to the town.
Should that be repair and/or replace?
Correct.
I'm just saying.
Replace and replace, yeah, it should be repaired.
Okay, you're right.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second that too.
Second by Diane. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Passes five, nothing, with no abstentions. Thank you. We are really happy to see something happen.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. General, commission business. George, we have a public notice option. You gave us a memo.
I just kind of have a couple of reports and memos in there. So, public notice options. We had, we had reported a month or two ago that we really do the very minimum when it comes to public notice for public hearings. We, we only require notice in, you know, legal ed notice in the newspaper. Well, states actually allows us by option to do other things. We can, we can post a sign, we can send notice to a butters. We send notice to a butters at the planning commission, for instance, for subdivision public hearings. We send notices to a butters for the Inland Wetlands public hearing. We don't for our, for our, for our items here, for special exceptions or for zone change stuff. So we, we had thought that you might want to consider expanding how we provide notice for public hearings. We think it's a good idea to provide as much notice as possible. And so we, we looked at our neighbors, most of our neighbors, surrounding neighbors do, do do a little bit more either by requiring a sign or by requiring a butters notices. I would make one note that most of our neighbors, Bloomfield, Granby, they, they put that onus on the applicant and not put the onus on staff to go out and post a sign or go out and send the letter. So there's a little bit of, you know, money savings and those kinds of things. So we, we certainly would advocate for, for additional and, and notice based on, on state statute that allows us to do more than the minimum. And that would be, in my memo, we would recommend sending a butters notices consistent with most of our, so that I can get all the land use boards to be consistent so that everybody has the same expectation. Even now, for instance, we do a sign for the zoning board of appeals, but we don't do. It just can be confusing to everybody. We should, we should have the same notice for our public hearings. So this is kind of staff's perspective. We would recommend expanding that by, by doing a butters notices and have the applicant do the butters notices and submit an affidavit to you at the time of the public hearing. We could certainly, you know, draft a flyer and kind of put the necessary legal information together to do that. And that would require, again, any, any change to your notice provisions, you should be in your zoning regulations and be clear about what the expectation is. I'm happy to chat about it.
My concern would be that I think we should expand, as our, as our neighboring towns have, require notice to the butters and a sign. But we need to get the agreement of the other land use commissions.
Are you saying that we're the outlier right now?
You do and you don't. I mean.
I mean, we'd like to get them.
You do and you don't. But yes, I would, it would, it would be good to have everyone on the same page.
Now, if we said, okay, we'd like the applicant to notify their butters and the applicant to put a sign up, would people here agree that that's a good thing to do?
Yeah, I would. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm not excited about putting the onus on the applicants. We've done that before. That used to be regular, I mean. And then, and then it was going to be, well, the staff will do it. And so the staff were going to do it and somehow that disappeared too. But what continues is the applicants have to provide the names and addresses of the butters to the town.
Yes, they do.
In their application, but nobody does anything with those names. They're just in the record. And you ask yourself, why is that? Well, why is that? Because there used to be something more in the way of service being provided to the residents.
And there's not today. There's nothing in your regs that require mailing.
For sure.
If you want it to, let's do that.
I do.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm also concerned that on the signage thing, I think we could do something a little better without necessarily doing more signs, but have some sort of a provision for these odd situations where people's property hits multiple roads and some of their neighbors never travel by their house. We've had a fan among the long-serving, a sort of well-remembered case of somebody who had, I think the road was on climax on, on three, two or three other roads out there. And a number of people who came to the public hearing were irate over the fact that they, they were just, they found out about it the day before or something like that before the public hearing. But not because those one sign wasn't where it was supposed to be, it was because that one sign was not on the main thoroughfare, it was on the one where his driveway comes out. So I think we could tinker with that a little bit. Maybe there are special cases that might warrant more than one sign.
This is helpful because Mr. Elliott raises a good point. There, you know, there is, there are pitfalls and additional burdens with assigning those responsibilities to, to the property owner, the business, the applicant. Not all applicants are the same. Not all applicants are, are big developer groups. Some of them are homeowners or small business owners. And so, in fact, that can be, that can be a little bit more challenging. And again, any, any, any flaw in that, in that process, you know, potentially raises legal issues for their, for their approval or the public hearing and those kinds of things. I mean, I'd love to say staff would be more than happy to do it, but we are more than happy to do it. I just note that it is an additional burden for us to, to take on.
Well, I think we stopped doing it years ago because staff was doing it. And it was one of those times when we didn't want to spend, we had too much cost and we needed to reduce.
I do think it's reasonable to have the applicant submit an affidavit. We can, you know, we can supply a list, we can do the mapping for the, we can do kind of the legwork.
Well, I would just say that we need to be cautious, that they need to know that their application's not going to be heard if they show up down here and they haven't sent out those notices. There's no pity of their failure.
Well, they have to certify that.
Well, they'll come down and say, oh, you know, well, we'll, we'll up some of the positives.
You'll be effaced with that.
We have five people sitting here, four who want to go ahead with something like that. I'm, I'm not opposed to it because it will be better than what we're, where we are. And where we are is.
Now, I'm, I'm more than, more than happy to, to have the same conversation with planning commission and the wetlands as well. You, you kind of, you, as, 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 your board will dictate what happens at the zoning board of appeals. They are your, I mean, you manage, I can have that conversation with them, but the zoning board is yours.
We have the rig.
Yeah. I mean, you make those changes to.
We set the rigs.
Well, I had one other thing I want to raise on this topic, and that has to do with just, I, I, I don't know, I'm getting older these days, but the reference to a just, I don't know, I'm getting older these days, but the reference to a butters, 100 feet of butter, what is that? And a butter is a common boundary.
Yeah, so we would probably not use, a butter would mean any parcel that touches another parcel. We would remove the word a butter if we were to say parcels within 100 feet of the subject property. We wouldn't say a butters then.
Oh, okay, okay. Now, I'm on the same page here.
You said, George, that you had benchmarked local other communities and they require applicants to make notice?
Yeah, that was, Bloomfield, Plainfield, Granby, Canton, all do a butters notices and require the applicant to submit an affidavit.
I'm sorry, but did you also say that other commissions in town have different rules?
They do, they do, and that's trying to clear up a little bit of that confusion.
Sure.
Yes, yes. Again, the zoning board of appeals has a sign. In the Wetlands does a butters within 100 feet.
Well, I mean, I agree with David that we probably should be consistent, but yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense.
I think it should be fairly as uniform as possible.
Yeah, so we think a sign and notice to people within 100 feet.
So, I'll have that conversation this month.
Have the conversation with the planning.
Come back and let you know what it means.
And ZBA, you can tell them what we're going to do. I'm sorry, Sharon.
Okay, two, retail cannabis. Just wanted to remind everybody that if the referendum passes, meaning the citizens of Simsbury vote to allow retail cannabis in the community, if the zoning commission doesn't approve some framework to allow it, they will be permitted as a matter of right anywhere retail can go. So, we are faced with a kind of a tight timeframe in terms of adoption in public hearing if the referendum passes. The referendum is on election day, right? It's November 7. State statute says the referendum goes into effect the first Monday in December. So, we would need to be prepared to have a public hearing in November and make a decision. I guess my question is, there are two things. One, I wanted to let you know that we're going to need to kind of act fast and pay attention. We'll probably have to pre-advertise a public hearing. And if the referendum fails or if, I don't actually know what the language is. So, if the voters decide not to allow retail cannabis in, we would just cancel the public hearing and you wouldn't need to take any action. So, that's the first thing. Second thing is, you had a framework that we took most of the way through the process, which would allow retail cannabis only in the B3 zone, within 1,000 feet of the intersection of 202 and 44 in Bushia Road. So, that's where we're starting from. So, if there's a different perspective or you want to take a different framework, then you have to have that conversation in the next couple of meetings.
Why don't we schedule one of the sessions next?
On the 19th.
19th or the next meeting to go through the details of that and edit it if we choose so that we're prepared with something we agree on.
Good thought.
We did once agree on those.
Well, that's not quite true, but I understand the perspective. I don't know that we ever voted on it, did we? No.
I think we did, didn't we?
No.
You didn't, no, you did not. Remember, by the time we got to that point, the board of selectmen had initiated a prohibition, an 18-month prohibition. So, you voted to approve manufacturing cannabis or cultivation and manufacturing in the I, I-1 and II zones.
And we removed that section. That's right. You're right, Bruce.
Well, that wasn't really my point. My point was more about, I would not vote under any circumstances to enable cannabis retail in Simsbury. I'm not voting for that. But if the question we vote on is on a location, once the referendum has said cannabis is going to be legal in Simsbury, then I'm not voting on it. It's settled.
Understood.
And so, when we work out wording, it's wording that only has effect if there's a yes.
Right.
There might be some who still feel they're not going to put their name on a yes vote for cannabis in Simsbury.
Yeah, and just remember, the referendum supersedes anything either the zoning commission would do or the board of selectmen.
So, we could not vote to prohibit cannabis retail in town.
Not as the referendum allows it.
If the referendum passes. So, we only have the choice.
You shall allow, you must allow it.
We can decide where in town.
How it's reviewed, how it's approved and what zones it's permitted in or in any additional conditions. And that's appropriate.
We should start with what we had.
Yes, and I'll send that out.
Just one more related point though.
Someone might have kind of rethought our opinion on location, however.
Okay.
The document that you gave us refers to the state language as assuring cannabis sales wherever retail exists in the town. My recollection is clear that the language I always saw from the state referred to similar retail. Retail of similar products.
I think that's a fair assumption.
It's about alcohol that they compare it to. The document that you gave us gives the impression if it's retail, anywhere there's retail in Simsbury, you could sell cannabis.
Yeah, I think my.
It wasn't the state.
My sharing is from the town attorney.
So, that's his impression that the state standard would be similar has no difference.
Similar equals retail, similar doesn't equal alcohol.
Not the limitation to alcohol.
That's why we should craft something if it gets approved to where we want it to be.
Okay, growth management. We have to talk about that.
This was a request from Ms. Magan to put on the agenda. This is not from staff.
Yeah, well.
You were going to talk to us about the tools that we might have. For management of growth.
Sure.
We're assuming a situation, there are some people in town who have said, as Diane has said, we should be considering a moratorium on large apartment complexes. There are a certain number of people in town who don't want us to have any more retail or large apartments ever again. And there are people who think that the apartments that we've got have covered for the loss of the Hartford and haven't impacted the schools and are good the way they are. But I think we need to say whether or not we want to add more of them. My opinion is there's a point when you overbuild and you end up with not good situations in buildings that aren't needed, if you will. I mean, the whole south end of Boston was built in the late 1890s. It was a beautiful, beautiful place and it immediately became a slum because it didn't get supported. And it was in the 1970s when people started buying those up, and now it's beautiful. But, you know, 70 or 80 years is a long time. So, we need to consider whether or not overbuilding is an issue.
Yeah, I mean, the process, when you think about kind of where the process starts, the process starts with the plan of conservation and development, right? That is the roadmap that certainly from a policy perspective says this is the kind of development we want and this is kind of where we want it. And, you know, these are the timeframes we think about. So, that process obviously is going on right now. I do think that.
It is. I thought it was over. That the new plan of conservation. Oh, no, 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 that's right. No, I didn't.
It's not a public hearing on October 24th.
That was the one that we were going to get a letter, but that's coming later.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, that process is still ongoing and there's, you know, I think the planning commission did take some extra effort to try to provide a little bit better guidance as to where we would encourage and where we would not encourage residential development. I would be happy to drill down on that a little closer, but yeah, obviously if that existing, you have some existing zoning out there that would allow additional, I mean, it's finite. We don't have that much greenfield opportunities out there, but obviously every incremental residential unit has some impact on schools and traffic and those kinds of things. It's kind of figuring out a way to direct the amount and how, when, why, and where within the community.
Well, I think, I mean, the reason I had asked to have this put on the agenda was simply because it has been, had been mentioned by a number of different residents and it certainly was worth discussing, but in my opinion, I think we should at least, you know, respect that and have that discussion. I do think that if the planning commission, you know, if they're working on that, then that may be the place to have that conversation. But I do think that, you know, and then again, I think what people may not be aware, and I just want to reiterate, I'm fairly sure that an 830G application doesn't, wouldn't have any, like, we couldn't put a moratorium on that, like, that's just.
I believe you could not.
Yeah, so, you know, so that's, probably just want to get that on the record. But still, there has been a lot of development, a lot of it has been in the books, you know, has been like in the plan for a number of years now and it's just now coming out and just finally happening, but it's.
And you have a pipeline. There's a real pipeline of entitled, approved, but undeveloped projects.
Right.
144 at Doors Crossing, you have 180 at Iron Horse, you have X Number at Hartford South, which will, you know, be part of the future conversation. So, there are, you know, and then there's, you know, a couple of other pieces of ground where typically we would want to see, you know, some sort of mixing of residential and other kinds of uses probably under the current POCD.
Sure, so, yeah.
And the moratorium question is anytime you talk about, use that word, you got to have a reason for saying, and you have to be doing something and be revising your zoning ordinance or revising your zoning map.
Yep, you can't just.
You can't just say we don't want new houses. You have to say it and then act towards moving to changing things within your policy and your zoning ordinance is not the same.
I mean, I think it's good to have this conversation, but I think, I don't know, it sounds to me like the planning, you know, POCD might be, in fact, the place to have.
I mean, obviously, we send you guys lots of things to read and that's a huge responsibility for a volunteer group.
Remember, they had the big meeting which was mentioned last time.
So, the POC, so the POC is, POCD is in what we call a 65-day statutory period before a formal public hearing. So, that formal public hearing is on October 24th at the library, 7:00 PM. That draft is available on the town website. It's on the front page. We put it up today. And so, the planning commission will accept comments during that period. I would recommend, certainly the reason that, you know, the housing and the land use sections, I recommend reading it all, of course, but particularly those sections that affect how that plan tries to direct growth.
How did, can you tell us how the plan of conservation and development reflects the outcome of the meeting where I would say there were 300 or 400 residents in the meeting and I think all of them put their red dots on the apartment complexes in town? What did the, how does the plan of conservation and development deal with that sort of input?
So, the current draft of the plan tries to balance the issue of resources versus the need for housing, the need for affordable housing. So, the plan encourages additional residential development of a mixed-use type, really in, you know, kind of our major quarters, the Hot Meadow corridor, redevelopment in, you know, along West Street perhaps. There is a support, but an attempt for balance.
Okay.
And the affordability question is a big part of that document and how to get there. It's not an easy process.
Okay. I noticed in the Yankee Flyer last week and the week before, there's an ad for the Owen Murphy Apartments. So, some of our affordable units are advertising. So, that doesn't mean to me there's a shortage.
Well, they're age restricted, are they not? Is Owen Murphy age restricted? I can't see the words, age restricted.
I think they're income restricted.
Income, but also age or no?
I think there's age restriction.
Someone of age? Anyway.
But I hear what you're saying though.
Interesting comments. Okay, signs. You want to tell us about?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, just in case you hadn't noticed, I thought tonight was going to be a little bit busy, so I thought that we would do, we put the food trucks on the 19th. That's a continuation of that public hearing, so that's not on your agenda for tonight.
Okay.
I don't want to wear you out with this because I think we've tried to, we've talked about the, hang on. I can't talk. Put my.
Password.
Password at the same time. That's because you said something there. I just changed it today, that's why. So, we've kind of talked about this at bits and starts, I mean, the planner before me and you've had conversations about making revisions to your, to the sign ordinance because of, you know, recent Supreme Court decisions, ease of use and those kinds of things. But I just wanted tonight to just remind you of the things that staff is thinking about and working and working on. And it's particularly related to temporary signs. Temporary signs are the signs that we get the most calls about, the most complaints about, the most interest in, the most permits for, the most placement without permits. And it's the, it really is the hardest, it's really, it's really a very difficult piece of the job and the unfortunate job and how we manage this because we are a town and a community that is very active, that has lots of advocacy, that has lots of 5K runs. And not everybody's getting those permits and it's a challenge for us. And you kind of couple that with Supreme Court decision of a couple of years ago in Reed versus Gilborn in 15, that pretty much said, you know, if you've got to read the signs to know how to enforce it or where to allow it, your design ordinance is probably a little bit unconstitutional. So, with that being said, I just wanted to remind everybody that there still is confusion about how we allow temporary signs, when we allow them, when we don't allow them. Of course, we have two different sign regulations, right? We have a, the center zone is completely different to how we allow signs in the rest of the community. Yeah, I'm just talking about just temporary signs. I just wanted you to review again. So, from a townwide basis, not in the center zone, we allow temporary signs and we allow them really in two primary ways. We allow them always by permit, but we separate them into kind of business and then non-commercial. So, the public purpose, charitable, civic, those are Bay Ruth Registration, River Run 5K, Smootacular, those kinds of signs. We do allow them, again, always on private property. Never supposed to put signs on within the public right of way, although they're out there. There's dozens of signs out there and we know that. We require permits, 6D max, 32 square feet they can be. And that's in all zones, in all zones for those kinds of signs and again, on individual property. So, folks are supposed to come in and get permits for them and then put them out there. We also allow for businesses, we have a special category, for special sales and promotions and onsite events and those kinds of promotional sales. So, a permit that's allowed four times per year can only be 12 square feet and that's probably some of the concerns we have, which is well, business signs can have a temporary permit, but it can only be 12 square feet. But charitable or public sign can be 32 square feet. So, we have to start thinking about how to bring those all into a little bit more consistency and conformance.
And that doesn't go right into the whole content of the sign, like business versus?
Well, it does, it does a little bit. So, I don't really, I don't want to get totally into it.
Okay, that's fine. If you feel okay outside, okay.
So, yeah, but again, there's, but the category is temporary signs.
Oh, so that's different.
So, center zone, center zone, we allow all of these signs in the center zone without a permit. You can put your sign up on private property. So, sign on behalf of the town, a directional sign, yard sale sign, real estate sign, special event signs, political signs, construction signs, all those things. So, those don't require a permit. Sandwich board signs. Sandwich board signs, which you think would be in the temporary sign category, require a permit after seven days. I don't know if anybody even knows that. And I don't know that we have any real per, um, permits for those many sign boards that are out there. And I'll get to what we're gonna do about it in a second. But, so, just, I just, you, you don't need, you know what signs look like. I know, this is not intended to offend any particular business, we're business friendly here. So anyway, um, again, they're all different categories of signs, and I will, I, I mean, I, I can state it on the record, I am not going out and pulling up the Bay Ruth registration signs, not gonna do it, you'll run me out of town if I do that kind of stuff. But it's, aesthetics are important, and the proponents of signs are, it'd be important for us to try and, do our, do our, do our best to, to manage. As I said, A-frame signs, which are so popular in center zone, interestingly enough, they require zoning commission approval. Have you ever reviewed a, I, I don't think, I don't think there's any reason to bring a sign, like, a temporary sign to the zoning commission, we should amend the ordinance. I mean, that should, I mean, that's a time, place, matter, if it's this size and wants to go there, we should just allow it, but, like, as I said, we'll, we'll get to what we should do about it. Um, and I just wanted to remind you what, um, you know, I've got two lawyers in the room, so I'd be careful here, you guys would probably do this better than me. So Reed versus Gilbert, which, um, Towne Gilbert, um, was really the, the kind of the fundamental change that all these towns kind of started to panic over, which is, oh my gosh, we gotta, we gotta fix our sign ordinance because it's, it's unconstitutional. Essentially, as I said before, um, I think it's always, it's, it's important to note that, that the Supreme Court voted 9-0. Uh, I don't, it might have been the last time they voted 9-0, um, finding that, that the town's code was, was violated the First Amendment. These were about temporary signs for, for church that wanted to, that wanted to direct parishioners or their, um, their folks to, to church on Sunday. So if you had, again, if you had to read the sign, then it's probably content-based. So if you say a political sign, how do you know it's a political sign? Vote for, well, how do you know it's a real estate sign? Because it says, it's important there. So if you read the sign, you're not supposed to be able to do that. So the recommendation, um, Justice Alito said, this is how you should do it. Time, place, and matter, location, size, height, number, duration, those kinds of things are all the types of things that we can do to regulate those signs. Again, just move away from categories and, and exemptions. I would like to figure out a way to keep the momentum on, on this, because as I said, we do get calls a lot, and we're very sensitive to it, but we're also sensitive to, to, to the advocacy and all our community groups who want to do this kind of stuff. And, you know, planning directors don't like to, you know, make, make the Bay Ruth lame mad, because they're trying, but, but we should, we should figure out how to, how to, how to manage this a little better. I mean, I do think that the best way to do it is, is to allow folks to have temporary signs and don't put, don't put them as categories. So you can have two signs, eight square feet for a period of 30 days, or a period of, at, at some duration during the year. I, I know there's gonna be some change, you had, the guy said, had a draft that I, I recall that nobody really liked. I mean, it was, it was, it was lengthy, and it was, it was confusing, and, I mean, I mean, anyway. So I, I, again, I, I would like to figure out how to, how to, how to kind of continue the way, but I would like to at least look at how we deal with the temporary signs, and I would love, you know, to, to get to some, um, consensus with you about how, how you would like us to, you know, how, how you'd like us to kind of formulate, should we be more aggressive, should we be more restrictive, should, should we be out there enforcing more? You know, I mean, a little bit backing to do that, and I, I do think that I wanted to at least explain that issue to you, like, get a little bit of direction, or at least a little feel from you as to, as to how we, how we ought to go about doing it. And it's certainly, I'll leave you with one more thing, is that, you know, anything we do, you know, it, it's gonna require education, it's gonna require going to the chamber and having conversations and being very sensitive about it, because there are folks who have had signs, you know, kind of, we kind of, kind of let a lot of things go during the COVID era, right? I mean, we were, we were, we were, we were being supportive of businesses by allowing those signs if they have without permits and stuff, and it's kind of hard to get those horses back into warmwood, but, so, I think there's gonna be a little bit of help and support.
It'd be nice to get the center zone and the rest of the town on the same page, same set of rails.
Certainly from the sign perspective, I would.
From the sign perspective.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll play.
I, I, it's, it's worthy of discussion, so I'd like to, I'd like to, I mean, with your permission, I'd like to just do a little bit more work, I mean, I don't even know, I'm not talking about doing strike throughs of the ordinance, but I mean, at least try to come up with a little bit of framework to say, I mean, this is how we ought to try and manage this.
I'm all about consistency.
So just to be clear, there's been no update since the Supreme Court decision?
Have not.
We didn't ever vote on the sign, right?
We did not.
We didn't, I thought we did.
No, we did.
Round 21.
We did a draft, and it was awful.
Well, we should try again, then.
Supreme Court said, if you, you know.
The English was bad, the logic was bad.
It was, but I mean, I, I mean, for Mr. Brat's, for a question there, is that, the Supreme Court said that, you know, if you, um, if you've got to read the signs, your, your ordinance is probably presumptively unconstitutional, so we don't really want to get into that.
That 27-page thing was referred to us by our, the town attorney, if I remember this correctly.
I understand.
So, the town attorney gives us 27 pages.
It was a model, it was a model, um, it was a model sign ordinance developed by the, the International City County Attorney Association.
I think, I think there was multiple things mashed into one.
Yeah, there was. So we, you know, we can take that and work with that, but again, I, I think the, the temporary signs is what gives us the most, I mean, I think by and large, this, we don't get complaints from businesses about, you know, permanent signs and those kinds of things, not really, any, businesses always want signs that are a little bit bigger, but by and large, those kind of permanent signs, we don't have too much pushback on.
Anybody else?
I just think we're drowning in signs right now.
Well, when the campaign starts.
It's over your month.
It's driving through the middle street in the town center, it's just one sign after another.
Yes.
I begin to read them all, there's so many, and I'm still driving.
They're self-defeating, then.
Yeah.
Who reads? You can't. And stay on the road.
You need to be bigger with bigger letters.
I'm supposed to drive, I'm supposed to be, I'm on the road, I'm on the side.
Maybe we're gonna be need to work on ordinance about broadcast messages, because that may be.
I think it's time.
I don't have anything else.
Let's get into it, Jim, somebody want to move that?
Do a adjourn?
Sure, I'll move to adjourn.
Second?
We had competing, second, I tell you. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose and made the motion.